Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education regular meeting of June 20th. We'll have a call to order with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and then a moment of silence. You should just remain silent and then we'll sit down after this. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands on our nation, in the heart and in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Maybe we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Ruth?
Yes, Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mrs. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zadiski?
Here.
And I'm the first one to forget. Please turn off all your phones during the meeting. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. And at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gregory for item number five.
Yes, awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Molnar. So I appreciate everyone being here. We're very excited. We have not done this type of recognition in this number, so we're very excited for all of you to come out on a summer night, kind of into summer break. So we truly appreciate that. We had probably 50 other recognized in May, so it was kind of hard to squeeze this group in at the same time, and we wanted to make sure we didn't miss anyone. So thank you all for being here. Real quick here, at this time, the board welcomes comments on how the Oregon City Schools utilizes their Title VI B funds for the 23-24 school year. If anyone has any comments on that? Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to introduce Mrs. Linville and Mrs. Sneed could please come forward, and they are going to help with the presentations of all the kids. It should be, yep, it should be ready to go. They can come off.
As I crash into it. Hi, I'm Robyn Sneed, and I'm a teacher at Jerusalem. This is Susan Linville. Sorry, I was going to say, I was going to say, and I teach third and fourth grade Gifted Language Arts. And Ms. Linville teaches third grade, and we have some students here that we'd like to recognize. The students are being recognized for high achievement in something called Wordmasters. It's an online, for those of you, probably everybody that I can see in the crowd is familiar with it, but it's an online vocabulary and analogy challenge. The students are given three different lists of words, 25 words apiece, and then they have to come up with analogies, and they are tough. If you ever want to look it up, go to wordmasters.com, challenge yourself, there are some that you can take a look at tonight. So they're pretty tough. So these kids, I'm super proud of them, and it's a program for third through eighth graders. So we have third through eighth grade here tonight. And there's different designations. So the top 10 to 15 students in the nation, there's 125,000 students that participate in this online challenge. We have the top designation is the highest honor, and those are the top 10 to 15 students at their grade level. The high honor is the top 2% in their grade level in the nation, and the honorable mention is the top 10% in the nation. So it's a pretty big feat, and we have a good crowd here tonight. And I think without further ado, we're going to go ahead and announce the names, so I'm super excited to do this, and thank you guys for giving us this opportunity.
And if anybody wants to take pictures, you're very welcome to do so at any time.
Okay, we'll start with eighth grade. Jackson Shortridge with highest honor, and Blaise Kluckey with honorable mention. Come on, come on.
Yep, come on up.
You can come up.
Congratulations.
Can I just have a, like, formal?
Yep, come on up, and then we'll give you your certificate, and then we're going to take pictures with everybody in the end.
Thank you very much. Nice job, guys. And then in fourth grade, we have Adalaya Shortridge with high honor, Ella Baker, honorable mention, Ellie Conley, honorable mention, Leah Fahim, honorable mention, Jocelyn Sauerwine, honorable mention, Astraea Sly, honorable mention, Kaya Swansdo, honorable mention, and Crosby Timmabeef, honorable mention. And then in third grade, all of the third graders were honorable mention. So we have Benny Becerra, Grace Vicford, Kyle Conley, and Noah Critis. Did you guys want to line up right here? So now, I want you to stand right in front of, right, for change, you guys, so maybe you don't, you guys can line up right here.
Is that everybody?
Yeah, that's everyone. We have some that we're not able to.
Do we want to announce their names, just who could?
We did.
Oh, was that all part of it?
Yes, we did.
All right, so congratulations. So I'd like you two to kind of get in with the group somehow.
I was going to say, how about one on each side?
Yep, one on each side. Congratulations to all of you, because you are going to have to squeeze a little bit. And the tall guys might have to go in the back. So, yeah, we want to do that. Come on up, if you want. Don't be shy.
Too short.
I don't know if I'm a professional photographer, I'm normally not, but, all right, look at me, though, we'll get one big group. One, two, three. All right, we'll let the families come on up. They're like, which way do I look? Did you get it?
Yeah.
Good. Kids, congratulations. We are so proud of you, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to congratulate you for your commitment, and I know many of you will have an opportunity to continue to do and compete in Wordmasters moving forward, so we wish you the best of luck. And families, thanks for coming out tonight, and we are truly honored to recognize your kids. We try to do that as much as we can, and we truly appreciate it. So thank you very much. So we'll have a seat.
And I'd like to thank the parents, too, because it's your inspiration to them that makes them what they are. So congratulations to parents, too, and grandparents, whoever's reading. And if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to go out on this nice evening. You don't have to stay with me.
Normally, everybody takes advantage of that. But you do not have to, if you want to teach them about how board meetings work.
We'll do that next year.
Next year, yeah, okay.
Thank you again, but thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Cool. Thanks for bringing the whole entire family out.
He's a guy that's on his degree, but he wants to play international.
That's all right, he'll get there.
Always next year.
Higher than I ever got, I never even got there. Attempted it.
Okay, item six, public participation at board meetings. All board meetings are open to the public. Do you have any cards, Mrs. Ruth? No, I do not. Okay. Be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. Moving to the treasures report, Mrs. Ruth, please.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Molnar, I just want to just briefly review. This is obviously at the time of year where we're focusing on closing the books. On the following items, some of them are attached and are put up into the Google Docs. I have all the year-end transfers and advances. Obviously, a transfer is permanent, advances will be returned July 1st. Then I have the final fiscal year '22, '23, the revenue estimates and the appropriation measure. And then the initial, behind that, is the initial fiscal year '23, '24 revenue estimate and appropriation measure that will allow us to cut checks before the next board meeting as of 7/1, so as expenses continue to move on. I'm hopeful we won't need another board meeting, but I do appreciate if the board would set up a time just in case. I really think we're going to be okay, but I'll let everyone know by June 28th at the very latest. We just have to post the final payroll. Also, as part of the treasures area is the annual motion to waive convenience fees for parents. That's what, you know, the board has been picking up, the conveyance fees for fees and lunches, and it seems to help our parents, and it's still a savings for us because, you know, we aren't happy to handle all that money. The one transfer that was listed separately under the motion is under H. I just want to make sure those are the Medicaid dollars. We did get those, and we put those towards the PI fund. It's a one-time item that we never assume we will be receiving, but so far, we've had a pretty good track record. Just a brief update, the medical insurance renewal is underway, has been underway and is effective 7/1. All the qualifying event hudders have been sent to staff, and hopefully, I don't want to knock on wood, if I had some, I would, insurance card are hoped, cards are hopefully going to be mailed up to staff this week, let's hope, but if not, we have other ways, and I'm sure they've all been made aware of, and I'll send out a reminder that they can reach out to our offices. I did make a couple really modest five-year forecast adjustments. I didn't put a whole big thing in because at the end of the day, it was only adding one day at the end, and we have so much stuff happening at the state, we don't know. In fact, tomorrow, I'm listening to a presentation about the changes the Senate made versus the House. We'll see, we really don't know what's going to happen with the budget just yet, so there's no point in doing a major overhaul, but there were some minor ones, the five-year. Also, so we'll see what happens with that. But unless there are questions, that is my report. This is truly month-end close, and hopefully, we got this covered.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ruth. Do we have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Do we have any need for an executive session this evening? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing non, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes, and we do have one of our new teachers here this evening.
We do. Robert Edwards is here, and he is, again, he goes by, you go by Robbie, I think, more than Robert, but Robert's what's on our agenda. But anyways, we're very excited to have him. He's going to be an intervention specialist here at Clay, and he's been in Washington Local the last couple of years, so we're very excited to have him, and obviously, he's got a family connection here in our schools, so we're excited that family wants to return. And so congratulations to you, and we're excited for you to get started, and I hope you're having a good summer.
Yeah, thank you very much. Excited to have you back.
Awesome, thank you.
And Rob, we forgive you for starting with Washington Local, because that's where I started, too. But see, we work our way up to the better school districts. Okay, thank you. This new business. Item A, fee schedules. We need a motion to approve the fees for elementary, middle, and high school schools.
So moved.
Motion? And second?
Second.
And discussion? And roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Moving on to disposal of equipment and materials, we need a motion to dispose of the following: 322 books from the district and a 2,000 Chevy S10 truck from Career Tech. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item C, handbooks. We need a motion to adopt the following handbooks: the Substitute Teacher Handbook, Vassar Junior High, Eisenhower Intermediate, Coy, Jerusalem, and Star Elementaries, and the District-Wide Elementary Handbook. The drafts were previously distributed to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item D, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Jerusalem Elementary School received an anonymous donation of $200 to help with outstanding balances on student school lunch accounts. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved, thanks.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item E, transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the '22-'23 school year. It should be '23, '24.
'24.
Yeah, '22, '24. The Glenville family to Toledo Christian, the Cos family to Toledo School for the Arts, the Batch family to St. Ursula, and the Hughes family to Notre Dame Academy. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? And roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item F, Nationwide Children's Hospital of Toledo LLC. We need a motion to approve the extended lease with Nationwide Children's Hospital of Toledo LLC. A copy of the extended lease has been distributed to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? I'll second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Zadiski?
I'll abstain.
Yes. Item G, door access system. We need a motion to approve the district-wide door access system proposed by Unifi in the amount of $71,197, made possible by the Ohio K-12 School Safety Grant Program. Proposals were accepted by Unifi, Macalany Security Solutions, and Guardian Alarm. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Do you know what this does for us?
Just updating our FOB system and our whole alarm system. It's something that has been, you know, growing, and I don't know, Wes has been a part of this, too, yeah.
Yeah, so this is a replacement of our current system, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 years of age, and it's failing component-wise, and it's been harder to get the parts. This'll put us all on the same platform, make management easier, and it'll tie in with our camera system, too, to give us bookmarking of when FOBs are entered. They'll make a record on the camera system as well.
So long as the FOBs will be distributed?
Eventually, we don't have to do that as part of the process, that was part of our selection criteria. We can reuse our existing FOBs to get the system up off the ground, but then we'll be reusing new FOBs with a more secure FOB type that the system supports.
So what's the timeline? Is this like something that just happens when someone will be ready at, when school starts?
Once we get the approval, our hope was to get it started this summer. I don't know on the lead time for all the different equipment, if it'll be done by the time school starts, which is why it was important for us to have the flexibility of being able to reuse our existing FOBs.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving to roll call then. Oh, I'm sorry, any more questions?
Okay. Oh, okay, excuse me, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item H, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the May 16, 2023 agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Molnar. I'm just going to go through and start with, we should have the strategic plan and the supervisory board kind of stapled together. So I just want to highlight some of the strategic plan, kind of the summary of the year a little bit, and again, if there's questions, I'm not going to go through each and every objective. I was hoping at the August work session that we could talk about, you know, where we want to go now moving into next year, rather than setting a separate meeting. So, and then certainly, anytime in between there, we can look at it. But our strategic plan, we obviously made a year But our strategic plan, we obviously made a year ago in the summer. It's a general guide to measure accomplishments and provide direction to district leaders. The year's plan was reviewed regularly throughout the school year. I had meetings with many of the objective and goal leads throughout the year and gave a few updates throughout the board. So here's some little bit of the highlights. We completed or made progress in twenty-five to twenty-seven objectives connected to the six goals that we have. So five were completed based on what the actual objective called for. Twenty are in progress, which makes a lot of sense because many of them are kind of continuations of where we're at and where we want to go. And then two not started. One not started because we chose not to do it and the other not started because we ran out of time. So I can go through, but you'll see those on your document in red, so green, red, yellow. So I was very happy with the, at least I feel we've made significant progress in the vast majority of all of those. We made progress in documenting state testing data with overall improvement in state testing areas. I think Mr. Savick might address that here in the curriculum report a little bit deeper. We made progress by establishing a new teachings professions program, a new junior high career tech exploratory program, along with realigning the junior high schedule and courses. And that's still happening through this summer. We are making a grand effort. Ms. Tolerick and Mr. Quigg are making a grand effort to really take a deep dive into the schedule and what's best for kids, to give them the most opportunities for exploratory classes and classes that they want. So I'm very proud of both of those two for really taking a deep dive into fast schedule. We are making progress with the updated athletic handbook and training plans for coaches. One of Mr. Kiss's goals is to certainly continue to bring together and work on the training components that we've talked about often with our coaches. He actually has a full coaches meeting scheduled next week, more of a, kind of a retreat at his house where they're going to do a cookout and kind of hit high-level topics. But I was really excited to hear that he's bringing, I think everyone are coming, every coach is coming, at least every head coach, and then maybe he's inviting the assistants, I'm not sure on that. But very, very proud that he's getting that moving. And I know they're working on the athletic handbook right as we speak right now, getting updates as we're going through the summer. We had a huge success with our strength and conditioning program. David Ostrander has really taken that program to another level with your support, with Jane's support, funding the athlete, or the weight room. It's just phenomenal. Kids were in it today, kids are in it every day, you know? I mean, they're in it every single day. And I think every team's got buying now, to be female and male. I mean, it's just, they're in there, they're getting stronger. They love the happen, and I see Mr. Ostrander, man, he is working, he's sweating, and he's doing everything he can to help kids get stronger and be better athletes. So thank you for the support for the weight room. We successfully introduced Focus Three to all our students and began the process of providing a common language for our students and how to deal with tough situations. I feel very good about it. And I have unanimous, unanimous, what's the word? Unanimous agreement that they want to continue it and even expand on it next year with our students by all the principals. They felt it was so beneficial this year. And we have all kinds of activities that we can share with you, but the bottom line is, is they touch base. We had a lot of Focus Three Friday types of activities and things where they're just touching base on really how do you react and how do you behave when a situation gets tough? Boy, we all need that. So very excited about that piece. We are almost complete with a multi-year facilities draft plan that Mr. Sandwich and his team have been working on. So we hope to have that by next board meeting that we can really share with you. And again, I think that'll be a piece that we can dive into in our work sessions and really start to formulate a plan moving forward with facilities. And we are, we are kind of reinventing the whole alumni outreach and organization to be, I guess, to have a more robust alumni office. I had a meeting just yesterday, or was it yesterday? What's today, Tuesday, yeah, Monday, yeah. So Monday afternoon with Mr. Keller and Mary Day and Amy. And just to continue to talk about how we're going to bring together champions, alumni decade champions, and put together events similar to the Groove and the Grow that we've had in the past and other things, fundraising and those types of things. So the energy is there and it's moving, moving very fast right now. So that's kind of the overall, I guess, you know, just some of the highlights of all those objectives. I think moving forward next year, if looking at the current ones, but even maybe taking these areas and flesh them out even more is, I didn't hit real hard on the communications one, but I really want to work with the board and to work with our leadership staff on bringing a commonality to our, our social media posts. And really, how are we going to go about, you know, looking at what the Oracle does, the bird's eye view, and then anything else? Because I think the Oracle has been led by folks that may not be around a whole lot, whole lot longer. So we have to decide, you know, what's the purpose of all these? And just, you know, there's a lot of ideas working with Wes, just on the best ways for teachers to communicate with their kids. We're kind of all over the place with Remind and other things. So there's a lot of tools out there, but it's hard to decide what's the right one. Again, facilities plan, I think is a big one just for where it's headed. I was out at the stadium and our stadium is, is, you know, is just in constant need of repair. And we're at a point now, and these aren't even facilities yet, but we need bleachers in the gym and we're going to need seating in the stadium. I mean, there's some long-term, multimillion-dollar kind of things that are going to have to happen in the next decade by somebody in some time, and we just kind of have to have some forethought. Alumni outreach, like I mentioned earlier, continue to develop and use our testing data and see what we can do to continue to give our kids the best education they can and to continue to focus on student and staff culture, which I just think is the foundation for everything. So recommendation was hold work session in August and then kind of get a sense where the board's at. And then I would also hold then an August leadership team meeting like we do and really kind of relaunch the objectives for that year, which many of them are already in place. We just need to continue working on them. So that was quick. I don't, I don't know how much more, are there specific questions about a particular goal, objective? I feel very confident that we worked hard on the strategic plan and really helped focus and set us to feel like we had some good accomplishments at the end of the year. You know, sometimes you look back and you can't see it very clear, but when they're on paper, you can look back and see what we've done.
Not only that, but the fact that almost every single goal in that strategic plan is measurable, that makes a huge difference. And so it allows us to go back to the community and say, we've been able to document this with measurable outcomes and it's a great thing.
Yep, and we'll have multiple years of that hopefully in the next coming years that we can show what we're doing to make this the best place to be for kids, kids and adults. Then a quick just update on the stadium. Just got a few questions about it, so I thought I'd just put it out there. The press box is going well and under budget. We continue, I mean, that thing has been moving right along. So yeah, knock on wood. There's also a lot of cement repair. If you haven't been out there, you know, there's always cement chips going on. So that's an every summer thing, but, but I just saw them out there and they're, they're doing it and they're, you know, they're chunking it out and filling it in and making it look nice, and then we'll have to paint it. So we're going to do our best to have that stadium look great for the fall. We will be.
Hold quick on that one.
Yeah.
Just as, you know, you watch some of the college football and they do all the fans jumping and stuff. Do we ever have ours like structurally tested, you know, on much?
Not, not, not to my knowledge.
Like, do you have a clap at some football game if we're winning, everyone's going, jumping up and down? Have we, have we done a study of that?
No, we haven't. We can certainly talk, I'll talk with Mr. Sandwich about that and see if there's, you know, what we need. I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think there's any evidence that there's a structural problem. I mean, it's more cosmetic right now in terms of the cement base, you know, like at the base of seating or at the base of poles. That's really where we see most of the cement repair. But again, it's an older stadium for sure. I mean, it looks beautiful, but.
It's almost as old as I am.
Yeah.
You watch all the college football game, you just want to, how do the engineers stop to withhold all that?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll talk to Mr. Sandwich about that and that could be, you know, maybe part of our five-year facility plan is to do some kind of stadium study on that. I know certainly, you know, the idea of replacing that stadium or, or knocking it down is not anything that I think most people are considering. So repair and keeping it, you know, in the best condition possible. I will say in the fall, we do have a ramp lift that will, for the front. Remember, we talked about that? It'll be, it's a, you know, so we can lift wheelchairs or anybody that can't get up the steps can get up in the stadium. So we're going to be looking at that here in the next coming weeks, get it out there, test it out. I mean, it's a hand crank kind of thing, but, but we don't really have a lot of electricity and we didn't want it to break. And it's real, I mean, it's, it's going to be easy to do.
Not be able to sit on the field anymore?
No, we'll still allow that. But, but I know like Mrs. Mulner has thought for years, she'd like to go up and sit in that front row and see it from that different perspective because it's up higher, right, than it is lower. So we have to decide how many we can get up and how many we can do. But, but there's not going to be a lot of room for wheelchairs specifically, but there will be for people that can get in and sit in the seats, if that makes sense, but they just can't get up. And so we're going to look at that and see what we can do. So I'm excited about that. And flight poles, when they're, I think they're on order. If they're not, they will be very soon. And flags, we hope we will have all eleven NLL school flags around, both inside and outside. So that's essentially all we'll be able to get done this year leading into the season. But I feel good about that. And just a quick kindergarten enrollment there, we have two hundred and fifteen kindergarten completed registrations before open enrollment. So open enrollment, we have twenty-eight who have applied at this point, so we're going through that process right now and going through all those applications, which is typical. So when you add both of those up, you're, if they all were to come, I mean, the two forties, which has been our average for the last eight, nine years. So we're, we're not bigger than we've been in the past, but, but we're not smaller either. So I just thought of getting that. That, that's kind of my, my update.
Has there been much feedback on the new, the announcement today regarding the NLL and BCSN two? With that new.
Network.
Network, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of it or not.
Yeah, it's been kind of behind the scenes quiet until Mr. Jerski, our, our football coach, Mr. Galius, and then three students went last, just last week, I think, and filmed those little promos. So somebody, a group of five from each school went down to BCSN or wherever they did it, I'm not even sure, and filmed a promo. So we begin, and the goal of this NLL network is to really just showcase schools, but not just athletics, but arts and other activities. Really, it's going to be up to us as a district to, to share what we want to share, if that makes sense. And I haven't had any personal reaction to it because I know it just came out and I just started to.
For those, for those who may be watching or listening, BCSN two is going to become the Northern Lakes League Network starting on August first. And it will be basically, with some very minor exceptions, a twenty-four-hour-a-day showcase for the schools in the Northern Lakes League. I believe it's the first high school conference, at least in the state of Ohio, to have its own television network. And it's something that will give us an opportunity not to showcase all our student athletes, but also some of our great academic programs happening here as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm curious, excited, I don't know what it's going to be, but, but I know the NLL leadership and BCSN are very excited about it. And so, so we're going to certainly do our part to take advantage of that. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you, Mrs. Mulner, that's all I got.
Well, thank you. Okay, moving on to old business, we have some policies to adopt. One for health education, dyslexia intervention and support CCP, and reporting child abuse and mandatory training. May I have a motion to adopt those, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Shea who made the motion?
Or Jeff?
Oh, I actually had you, Jeff, okay, excuse me. Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Okay, board committee reports. These are sort of falling by the wayside because we've been all together with work sessions. So there won't be very many of these this evening. Finance?
Yeah, no, no meeting due to the work sessions?
Yes. Capital improvement?
Same thing.
Policy personnel, same thing, except these new policies we adopted. Academic?
Spent a lot of time last week talking about a variety of topics. Start out with some of the more immediate, short-term things right now. Summer school is well underway within the district at Clay, Facet, Ike, and at the elementary school levels. And I think what's really great for the taxpayers and the community members of the city of Oregon is the fact that the district continues to use COVID money in supporting summer school. And it's important to note also that S R money will continue to cover the cost of summer school through next summer. And so that's, that's a really good thing for the district. And it's also allowed us to recapture some of the learning disparities that have occurred during the COVID period. And so those, those monies have come in handy and certainly in helping our kiddos that would like the extra assistance and the families that are, want to see their kids continue to parent us. We spent the bulk of our meeting on the state test score reviews. And if you'll recall, at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that the district in the, in the math, science, and social studies areas made some extremely noticeable gains. At the time, we did not have the ELA, the English Language Arts scores because those take a little bit longer to process. But I think what, what is most exciting, and I think, you know, the reality of it is, is we're, we do many things as a district, but our number one goal is ultimately still to educate the children in the city of Oregon. And I think the results of the test scores are something that I think all of us can be proud of now. Are they one hundred percent perfect? No, there's rooms for, room for improvement, just like there is for everything in our lives. But this really ties into the strategic plan goals. And for example, one of the strategic plan goals is that all twenty state-tested grade-level subject areas will perform at or above the state average on an annual basis. Ninety percent of our programs this year were at or above the state average. Strategic plan goal, all twenty state-tested grade-level subject areas will maintain or increase passing percentages year over year on an annual basis. Eighty-five percent of our, our groups increased passage percentages from previous years. And I think that the increases are really quite striking. There's an awful lot of double-digit increases scattered throughout the district, and I think it's something that, that everybody can be proud of. Administrators, our teachers, our parents, and our kids are really putting a great effort into it. And just to see these types of improvements, I think, really, really says a lot about what the, the commitment to the people in this community are focused on. Another one is that all twenty state-grade tested level subject areas will maintain a positive, a positive passage trend line over a five-year period. As of this year, thirty percent maintained a positive passage trend line. There's, there's some interesting caveats here that I think that need to be taken into consideration. It's sixteen out of twenty over the past three years in that area. So we have had, in the area of English Language Arts, all of our areas are showing a positive trend line, with the exception of third grade and eighth grade, those are two areas we want to see some improvement in. Both of those areas do show a positive trend line, however, since 2021. Again, COVID being a major issue in this whole process for all districts throughout the United States. We, we have areas where we definitely need to see improvement and math is one of them. Again, COVID, there's a direct correlation, it appears nationally, on COVID results in math skills. But if you look at our trends since 2021, all of our areas are showing positive progress. That's what we want to do. We want to continue to be moving in the right direction. So those are some things that, that, that are, we have, we discussed at the meeting. We also talked about Oregon City Schools maintaining or increasing accomplished and advanced proficiency rates in all state-tested grade-level subject areas on an annual basis. And we've got more than, nearly eighty percent are showing positive and strong performance trends, actually over eighty percent. So we're really moving in the right direction. There's, obviously, as we've talked about, areas for improvement. And so looking ahead to the coming school year, these are some of the areas that I know that everyone is going to be working toward continued improvement. Third grade star, English Language Arts and Math, seventh grade and eighth grade ELA, high school ELA, seventh and eighth grade math, geometry, and biology. That being said, in most of those areas, we did see improvement this year, but we want to continue to see additional growth. So congratulations to those who are helping to move the needle in the right direction and look forward to seeing this progress continue. And it's just, it's just nice to see. I mean, that, we made some major, major jumps this year, and I think it's all of us as a board can be very proud of that.
Yes, thank you. Legislative?
No, we've worked.
And student achievement? I think you just gave it all. Board discussion, I can give a couple of items. The State Board did have a resolution to increase the cut score for the third grade again. to increase the cut score for the third grade again by another five points, which is not making me real happy, because with COVID and all the downhill sliding for everybody in the state of Ohio, not just us, but they're going to increase it from six eighty-five to six ninety. So. And then we came out with the track all-league baseball. We had a pitcher of the year, Jared Horstein. First, on the first team, we had Jared and Jace Kennedy and Anthony Barnes. On the second team, we had Brendan Azuda and Kale Williams and Vinnie Gallagher. Then we had the lacrosse all-league team. The coach of the year was our coach, Jason Allen. The goalkeeper of the year was our Sidney Whittick. First team was, of course, Sidney and Alexis Hunter-Mark and Kendra Stevens and Allison Wallencheck. And the second team was Lady Davis and Sidney Strasburg. I think that's a pretty good representation of our kids to make that many first and second teams. Anybody else have anything? Okay, executive session, by anyone? Nope, okay. Next regular meeting is July eighteenth, I believe, and then a possible for June thirtieth. A possible.
A possible. Do you want to set a time or wait until we know for sure? Because we have to announce it.
Might as well do it right now.
June thirtieth, a Friday?
Yeah, yes. And I know that, I, I don't think, no, that Jeff could make it, but I know Lindsay said that the earliest Lindsay can usually make is, what, five? Or five, what time do we usually have the special meetings? I don't know if you can't make it. I just-
If it's the thirtieth, I can, I'm pretty wide open.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Is, would that be possible to do?
We can do it during the day, whatever works out.
During the day?
Yeah.
If we, if needed?
Yes, because I really-
Just throwing that out to the board if it's-
If that's possible.
It's a Friday, and a lot, a lot of people may want, have plans for the weekend.
Yeah, so like a noon or whatever, whatever works for, obviously, just the thought, so.
No, I-
Well, you don't, you're not sure yet, so work if you do.
Yeah, I will know for sure by the Wednesday, once everything's posted by Wednesday.
Between that one and then-
Okay, so what am I going to do? Should we aim for, okay, I'm gonna aim for noon, but we'll see. Okay. Okay.